Bernard and I serve as the Chair of the Financial Accounting Foundation. I'd like to welcome our stakeholders tuning into today's meeting. Today's meeting will include reports from the FASB Chair, the GASB Chair, the FAF Executive Director and the FAF Treasurer. We'll also receive reports about the latest activities of the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. And also a report of the, from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to the reports, I'm pleased to announce a number of important appointments. This is the meeting each year where we have quite a few appointments. And indeed, this year is no different. So first of all, the FAF Board of Trustees has appointed two new members to the trustees, Michael Clement and Beth Pierce. Their terms will begin on January 1st, 2024 and conclude on December 31st, 2028. Professor Clement is on the faculty of the Macomb School of Business at the University of Texas at Austin, where he teaches in the Department of Accounting. He's also a visiting professor of Business Administration in the Accounting and Management Unit at Harvard Business School. Michael's current research investigates the dissemination and use of financial information in the capital markets, with a focus on the activities and performance of sell-side security analysis. His research has been published in leading academic journals, including the Journal of Accounting and Economics, the Journal of Accounting Research, and the Accounting Review, among others. And he's been mentioned in multiple media outlets. Beth Pierce currently serves as the Chair of the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council, the GAS Act, a role to which she was appointed by the FAF Trustees in 2022, and from which she will step down when she joins the board. She retired from her position as the Vermont State Treasurer in 2022, after over a decade of service, having originally been appointed to the position and then winning five successive elections. Beth is a recognized leader among state treasurers and served in leadership roles with both the National Association of State Treasurers and the National Association of State Auditors, Controllers, and Treasurers. Prior to her service as State Treasurer, she had a distinguished career in state and municipal finance in Massachusetts, Connecticut, New York, and Vermont. The trustees also appointed a new member to the FASB, Hillary Salo. Hillary will succeed Jim Croker, the current Board Vice Chair, whose term concludes on June 30th, 2024. Her term will begin July 1st, 2024 and concludes June 30, 2029. She will then be eligible for consideration for reappointment to an additional five-year term. Hillary joined the FASB in 2020 as the Technical Director and Chair of the Emerging Issues Task Force from the New York City Office of KPMG. She joined KPMG in 2004 as a Senior Associate based in Chicago. She also served as a professional accounting fellow in the Office of the Chief Accountant in the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission in Washington from 2013 through 2015, before returning to KPMG as a partner in 2015. And she began her impressive career as a FASB postgraduate technical assistant after graduating from the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. The trustees have also reappointed FASB member Sue Cosper to a second five-year term. Sue was originally appointed to the board in May of 2019, having served eight years as its Technical Director and Chair of the EITF. Sue also serves as the FASB liaison to the Private Company Council. Prior to joining the FASB, she was a partner at PWC. The trustees have also reappointed Carolyn Smith to serve a second term on the GASB. Before joining the GASB, Ms. Smith's most recent position was with the Columbus, Ohio City Schools Office of Internal Audit, where she served as its Chief Executive. In that role, she led all audits and advised the Board of Education on matters of risk, control, and compliance. In addition to these appointments and reappointments, the trustees have named David Finkelstein to replace Jeremy Dillard on the Private Company Council. Mr. Finkelstein's term will begin on January 1st, 2024 and will run until December 31st of 2026, when he will be eligible for reappointment for a second term. David is a Director at Singer-Luark, a professional services firm based in their California office. In addition to serving as client, he's the assurance and advisory team lead for the firm's Practice Quality Center. David has more than 20 years of experience in public accounting, working with both public and private companies, including small and medium-sized family-owned companies and venture-backed companies in a variety of industries. With mention of David's appointment to the PCC, let me also take the opportunity to say a special thank you to Candace Wright, who is completing her service as Chair of the PCC on December 31st of this year. Candy is a Director with Postle Wait in Netterville, a Louisiana-based accounting and business advisory firm, and has committed her time to the PCC, serving several times, beginning from January of 2016. The Board sincerely thanks her for the generosity of her service. And we have one more appointee. The Board has appointed Robert Hamilton to the role of the Chair of the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. His term will begin on January 1st, 2024 and run for one year. Robert currently serves as the Vice Chair of GASAC. GASAC. And we look forward to his leadership on the, in the role of the Council's Chair. So I'd like to officially welcome all new appointees and congratulate our reappointed Board members. Later in the meeting, we'll take a moment to thank those who will be completing their service to our organization. But with that, let's move to our regular agenda. The first item of business is to approve the minutes from the Board's August 22nd and October 30th meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second, all in favor? Aye. Great. We will now move to the reports from the FASB, GASB, and GASAC. So first, FASB Chair Rich Jones. Rich?
Great. Thanks, Ed. Good afternoon. You have a copy of our, my third quarter Chairman's Report in your materials, but I thought it'd be helpful to spend a little time talking about some events since our last meeting. So since our last meeting, this past August, we continue to make good progress on our agenda and many important investor priorities reached or are about to reach important standard-setting milestones. We recently added projects to our technical agenda on accounting for government grants and the statement of cash flows as a direct result of input we received as part of our agenda outreach process. We've also issued an ED on disaggregation income statement expenses. We commonly refer to that project as DICE. And DICE responds to one of the most frequent requests we've heard from investors as part of our agenda outreach initiative, and it will be the subject of a public roundtable in December of this year. And we expect to issue an exposure draft on accounting for induced conversions, which is a project of the EITF before the end of the year, as well as a proposed chapter to our conceptual, our concept statements. And the chapter will be related to measurement, which would represent the final chapter in our concept statements. We've issued a final standard on accounting by a joint venture for its formation, and we expect to issue final standards on segment reporting, disclosure improvements related to SEC disclosure requirements, and accounting for and disclosure of cryptocurrency all before the end of the year. As noted in prior quarters, the progress that we're making on our agenda, all in response to input from our stakeholders, has been, has been extensive. And it's resulted in well-scope projects that respond to the needs of investors that we're able to complete on a timely basis. I look forward to updating you on these projects in future meetings. Regarding our post-implementation reviews of revenue recognition, leasing, and CECL, we continue to make progress on all three of those, fine-tuning that guidance since their issuance, as well as getting a soliciting input from our stakeholders on how we could prove either those standards or our standard-setting process. In fact, just last week, we had a public roundtable related to the post-implementation review of our revenue recognition standard, where we received a tremendous amount of feedback from our stakeholders. On behalf of my colleagues on the board, I thank you for your support and I look forward to taking your questions.
Any questions for Rich? Tim?
Hey, Rich. Thanks for the report. And I know you and the whole board spent a lot of time trying to keep up what is going on around the world with other standard setters. And I think you told us offline, you've been to Japan and Korea recently. And I know you talked to the ISSB also. And just curious, what you're trying to accomplish and how it's going?
Sure. And, and, and I think I've said before that a good idea has no borders. And, and we often hear about emerging issues and emerging trends from different parts of the world. We do have regular meetings with standard setters based around the world. So that was the, the purpose of our visit to both Korea and Japan. And they visit us on a regular basis as well to share their standard-setting initiatives, what they're seeing, what they're focused on. We also had a joint meeting with our board and the ISSB in September of this year. That's part of an annual discussion process we have, where we bring our entire boards together to talk about issues we're facing, what's similar, what's different. And, and, and that's all part of our ongoing sharing of information, recognizing that investors don't necessarily draw up a line around the border of which an issuer is, but look, look further. We also participated and heard a presentation from the ISSB on what their initiatives are. As we all know, our mission is focused on financial accounting and reporting, but it, but it's always good to hear other things that are going on and what they mean. When, when we take a look at financial accounting and reporting, we have a risk-agnostic approach, I would often say, where whatever the risk is, do our standards appropriately account for the financial accounting and reporting effects of that? So whether it's customer preferences, whether it's supply chain issues, whether it's government regulation, do we have appropriate accounting for that? And, and that's actually what gave rise to our project on environmental credits. We saw there were commercial transactions occurring, and there was a question of could we improve the accounting or improve the transparency about the accounting for such transactions? So it's all part of the ongoing dialogue, but we remain focused on that mission of financial accounting and reporting.
Thanks, Rich.
Mary?
So Rich, I know you have this DICE project, disaggregation of an income statement expenses. And I understand that the investors ask for this, that it's critical information that they need. Are the preparers happy to provide it or are they not so sure about?
Mary, you're right. And we commonly refer to it as DICE, disaggregation income statement expenses. It, it was one of the, the highest investor priorities we heard as part of our agenda outreach. By the same means, we also hear from preparers that assembling that information may be challenging and may be costly. And so as we issued an exposure draft on the project, we're actually having a public roundtable in December, where we're bringing preparers, practitioners, and investors together to talk about the project. We have our proposal out there. We have our, our suggested path forward. But now we get the input from our stakeholders and is there a better way to do it? Is there another way to accomplish it? If you look at our standards and the way they've evolved over time, they don't provide a mapping of details of what's in income statement captions. And effectively, that's the, the request from investors. This was our proposal to address it. You know, preparers certainly have some concerns about cost and complexities. We're happy to hear from both groups to see what's the best way to accomplish this important investor priority.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Larry?
Yeah, Rich, you mentioned the post-implementation review of a couple of standards. I'm curious as to what kind of feedback you've received on the credit loss standard, the CECL standard, and whether you think that will result in any changes to the standard.
Thanks, Larry. Great question. I, I would say that there were three primary things we heard since the issuance of CECL. One was concerns about cost and complexity, particularly access to data. One was about the interaction between our CECL standard, which is an expected loss standard, and, and pre-existing guidance on troubled debt restructuring, which was also a form of expected loss standard. And then the final was on the interaction of CECL with the, the accounting for acquired loans. And did they make the most sense? On the first issue, as we, as we heard those concerns, CECL by, by design was meant to be scalable, meaning it wasn't the exact same application for the most, the largest, most complex financial institutions as the smallest community banks. And as we explored further with the smaller entities, it was really access to data. We shared those concerns that we were hearing from those constituents, and it was really around regulatory reporting and the reporting to the bank regulators. Where the bank regulators and, and Governor Bowman at the Fed and others took an interest in it, and, and they actually made a significant effort to get data out in front of those people. And that, that was a significant improvement. On the interaction with troubled debt restructuring, we added a project to our agenda, and we completed it to effectively eliminate what was going to be a redundant and not necessarily consistent expected loss model. Since CECL is an expected loss model, why did we need another? And, and we finalized that project. The third project, which deals with acquired loans, effectively is dealing with the fact that when you acquire a loan, you record it at fair value, which inherently has some form of expectation of credit loss embedded in the fair value. Why would there be a need for certain loans to then record an allowance on top of that? We're, we're working through that project. We're, we're in the midst of the project. We've issued an exposure draft. We've gotten comments back. We're in the process of processing through those. But those are the three main things. And, and I think the importance on the PIR process is we're not waiting to address those standard-setting issues to the extent our constituents are raising them, we're addressing them timely.
Great. Thanks, Rich. Any other questions for Rich before we move to Joel? Seeing none, I'll turn to the GASB Chair, Joel Black.
Thanks, Ed. It's great to be with you all and, and report on the GASB's activities the third quarter of 2023. We continue to make progress on all of our projects, including issuing, issuing an exposure draft of a proposal to break out in the note disclosures, certain types of capital assets. That comment period is 90 days plus, ends January 5th. We look forward to a lot of feedback from our stakeholders on what they think about the proposal. We will utilize our, our normal channels of communicating that that proposal exists, but also it is the subject of the second edition of our Bridging the Gap podcast. So hopefully everybody's clicking and subscribing to GASB's podcast on Apple, Spotify, or wherever you get your podcasts. In addition, we did approve, the, the board approved the tech plan for the final third of 2023. In that approval, we added a project for subsequent events after research showed us that we had opportunities to significantly improve the consistency of application of that guidance. We also added a pre-agenda research activities on gap structure, dealing with and trying to accumulate information on what is the best way for us to provide our authoritative literature to our stakeholders. We also spend, are spending a, a small amount, but significant in its respects of time on electronic financial reporting. At this point, really, the financial statement taxonomy, that's a big process that we're only really starting to get underway, but we are trying to make progress on that as the Financial Data Transparency Act is underway and try to provide meaningful input into that dialogue and the SEC as they make their decisions about how that implementation will affect the municipal bond environment. So with that, I'd like to, to close. I know we'll have time later to, to thank, but I wanted to, on behalf of the GASB, thank Trustee Vice Chair Mary Barth and trustee and Tennessee State Treasurer David Lillard for their service to the FAF Board of Trustees. We really appreciate all your support over the years of the GASB, our activities, and your support of independent standard-setting. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Joel. Any questions for Joel? Mike?
Thanks, Ed. Joel, you mentioned your taxonomy work. Just curious, I think the budget that was just approved has some investment in that. You mentioned the Financial Data Transparency Act. So curious kind of how you see that, how you see the future unfolding, how that relates to kind of activities and, and objectives in the future.
Thanks, Mike. Sure. And we appreciate that. We did add a position to the budget for 2024 to have a taxonomy specialist add to our team. So we essentially have two FTE spread among four people that are working on that financial statement taxonomy, which isn't a lot. So this addition would supplement that, add to that, and just help us grow that taxonomy that much quicker. You know, the sooner I think we get in progress and get more, as much of the taxonomy developed as we can over the next several years, I think that provides more input to the SEC Office of Municipal Securities as they enact the rules. So I don't know exactly what they'll do with it, but we're hopeful that, that it would provide them with a lot of good input in utilization of in particular gap in that taxonomy.
Thank you. Any other questions? Manju?
Joel, I understand that the GASB recently convened a task force to address issues related to going concern, going concern uncertainties and severe financial stress. Could you comment on what led the GASB to convene this task force and, and what will emerge out of this effort?
Sure. Thanks, Manju. That is, we have a project. It's one of our bigger projects, Going Concern Disclosure, Severe Financial Stress Project. And we try to, with all of our major or comprehensive projects, have a task force that's convened, that has representatives from all of our different stakeholders on it. And that task force is a means for the board to get, and staff to get input on our proposals and decisions along the path of a project. So as decisions are made, they receive the same board papers. They provide feedback on what they think the board should know from their perspectives as prior to the board making that decision. That comes from the staff and the board hears that, which is just in addition to comment letters where we're getting at milestone portions of a project, we get feedback that allows us to get kind of outside-the-organization feedback along the way. So that's what that task force is doing.
Great. Any other questions for Joel? Oh, Marion, see?
Hi, Joel. You mentioned earlier that GASB has a research project relating to the structure of GASB-GAP. Just wondering if you could give us some additional information regarding the project and what you expect the outcomes to be?
Thanks, Marion. And we don't have necessarily a, a specific goal in mind except to get research or get information on the way in which we currently provide GAP. So the idea isn't that this isn't about analyzing the hierarchy of GAP or even necessarily changing that, but rather how we communicate that to our stakeholders and how they utilize GAP. We currently have dual authoritative guidance, the original pronouncements, and then a codification of those pronouncements. Is that the best way to continue forward? Are there ways to improve it, or is there a better way to do that, considering what many other standard setters might do? So that's what we're trying to get information on to figure out.
Great. Any other questions for Joel before we move on? Seeing none, we'll now hear from GASAC Chair and soon-to-be FAF Trustee, Beth Pierce.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. A copy of the GASAC report is included on page 126 of your package. The GASAC met on August 7th in conjunction with the American Accounting Association at their 2023 Annual Meeting. Since it happened on the 7th and the board was meeting, the trustee board on the 21st or 22nd, I included it in that report that's available to you, so I won't go through all the details there. I do want to, however, thank the, the AAA for their hospitality and their exceptional quality of the informational sessions. And I think one of my favorites was the one that several GASB members were involved. So it, it was a great coordinated and collaborative process. The next GASAC meeting is scheduled for December 7th. That meeting will include stakeholder feedback on a number of issues on the GASB work plan. And as Joel was talking, a lot of these are on there. And it, we have a very well-synced-up process with what's happening in the GASB. So those will include the financial reporting model, the revenue and expense recognition, infrastructure assets, which was added to your plan, I believe, last quarter, and going concern and uncertainties and severe financial distress. We've heard a little bit about that today. So as you've heard these, again, they, we are continued to be in sync with their agenda. And I'm impressed. I continue to be impressed with the steps taken by FAF and the GASB to integrate stakeholder input into the process. We asked for infrastructure assets to be put on there, and you did it. And so we're very pleased with that relationship. GASAC will also have a roundtable discussion on a subject that gets a little attention at the state and local level. It's a post-implementation review of the GASB Statement 75, accounting for other post-employment benefits, otherwise known as OPEB. It's a number of things, but healthcare being generally the largest piece of that. Pensions covered by GASB 67 and 68, as well as other statements. And OPEB's primarily, again, healthcare, covered by 74 and 75, are really at the top of the agenda in some of the issues that state and local governments are grappling with. So it's, it's something that state legislatures and policymakers and administration are looking at. And of course, this has an impact on the public. So we're looking forward to having those discussions and the statements that we have now. And I watched the evolution of that from way back when we were using FAS statements, because nothing existed for, in the 80s, and then the 90s in this. And I've watched that evolution, and it's really central to providing consistent and objective financial reporting. And we, having the PIR to look at this is, is, is the next step in that. And again, I think I heard Joel use the word evolution in one of his, his speeches or in a publication. And that's what it's all about. This is my last report as GASAC Chair, and I want to thank the FAF for the opportunity to serve in that capacity. The GASAC really is, I'm going to use that word again, evolving organization with a critical role in stake, stakeholder input. And it has been a pleasure to serve. With your actions today, the FAF has made an excellent choice in appointing Rob Hamilton. Excellent choices all the way through. But, and, and, there you go. As incoming Chair, Rob has an exceptional professional career in government accounting and is a great strategic thinker. I look forward to, to great things that come out of GASB over the next years. Finally, I want to thank the GASB staff for all their help. Joel and Alan are incredible professionals. Their staff, what can I say? They're just great. And I especially want to acknowledge two people. Lisa Parker, who is a, has a dual role. She's a senior project manager, and she's also the GASAC coordinator. And again, thank you, Lisa, for all you do. And GASAC is fine-tuned, it's a fine-tuned engine with the work of Greta DeAngelis. I just have to say, Greta, thank you for keeping me in line all the way through the process. And that concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Beth. Any questions for Beth? Seeing none, let me just add my thanks again for your service as GASAC Chair. And we very much look forward to having you among us as a trustee in all the work that we do and with the, the vast experience you'll bring into the mix. So we look forward to that.
Well, thank you very much. I do want to say I have big shoes to fill, and I don't think I'm going to have the same shoe size as, as our governmental, our governmental trustee who's leaving, David Lillard, has been one of my role models since I've been treasurer. And I just want to say thank you for that. And thank you for all the appointments. But as I look at the governmental trustee who's leaving, I, what you've done for FAF, what you've done in, in, in Tennessee, what you've done for NAST, what you've done for GASAC, I'm thankful for all that. And I know everyone in this room and all the participants in those organizations and your citizens do as well. So thank you, David.
Indeed. So with that, our next item is a report from the Oversight Committee. And speak of the devil, I'll turn it over to David Lillard and Tim Ryan.
Okay, I'll start. I'll start, and then I'll hand it off to the co-chair, Tim Ryan. The Oversight Committee met yesterday, the 13th of November, and received various items and discussed various matters. And one, several of which were that we received a report from the FASB Chair, Richard Jones, and Hillary Salo, the Technical Direct Staff Director of, of the FASB. We also received a report and discussed it from the GASB Chair, Joel Black, and Alan Skelton, who is the Technical and Staff Director for the GASB. We further received oversight meeting observations from trustee Rick Reising and also from meeting observations from trustee Brian Lewis. And I gave a brief overview of meeting observations in regard to the GASAC meeting that occurred in my review of the tape of it on August 7, 2023, in Denver, that, that Treasurer Pierce pointed out just a minute ago. With that, I'll turn it over to my co-chair, Tim Ryan.
Thank you, David. And it's not lost on me. That'll be the last time. And I too want to say thank you for everything you've done in standard-setting. It's been a pleasure to be co-chair with you. Good afternoon, everybody. It is, is great to be with you. As you heard from Rich Jones, we had a very good meeting yesterday. I won't recover the topics that he covered. I will, I want to make sure our stakeholders who are listening understand and know everything that is, is on the FASB agenda ties right back to the Agenda Consultation, as Rich talked about him, and Rich and the FASB staff and the Board of Trustees and the Oversight Committee have been very focused on making sure what is being driven is based upon that feedback. So that anchor has been very, very helpful. Everybody's feedback, the hundreds of parties that gave feedback, that was very helpful. We went deep on a couple of standards that are because of the importance, and Rich mentioned the disaggregation one, where the trustee spent time is making sure input is coming from all parties. And every, every effort was being made to get input from all parties, whether it be public hearings, reach-outs, availability, access, and the like. And we are very comfortable that the FASB staff and Rich and the team are doing everything they can to get input and making themselves available. And we are very comfortable that the FASB staff and Rich and the team are doing everything they can to get input and make themselves available. And I will make a plug, any input we desperately want to hear. So thank you for that. And we spent time there. We also spent time understanding feedback on the recently released income tax standard, disclosure standard, knowing how important that was in the feedback. And we, we got an update from Richard Hillary on feedback on that standard as well and the like. We also got feedback around how the board is working together under an accelerated pace of standard setting, which was something that was very important in the feedback that we got as well. And, and we're very comfortable with the resources that have been allocated, the project management and the dialogue and where the, the right dialogue that's happening. And we feel good about that as well. We did spend time on ISB to the earlier question and, and, and meetings within the national standard setters, just to make sure we stay abreast there. We talked about post-implementation and we also talked about the research agenda as well. The last two items that we covered before I turn it to you, Ed, is we did talk about how our new due process procedure was working, which is something we launched early this year for anybody, any stakeholder who does not feel comfortable as to whether we're using the right due process in place to reach out to the trustees directly. We've had nobody do that, but that is available. We wanted to just talk about how that was working and that mechanism is important to make sure as trustees were getting feedback. And then we also talked about how our new public sessions at the Oversight Committee are working as well. We had our third one yesterday and we talked about the importance of just that transparent conversation. We feel good about that step as well, the increased transparency. So it was a good meeting. We, we're very grateful for the work that Rich, Hillary and the team are doing. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
Thanks, Tim. Any questions for David or Tim? And for those watching and listening, I would commend to you the, the open sessions of the Oversight Committee that Tim just mentioned from yesterday. The schedules are publicly available on the website and so forth. It's a great way to get insight into that very thorough oversight process. Seeing no questions, our next report is from FAF Executive Director, John Auchincloss. John?
Yeah, thank you, Ed. I wanted to start off with a, a brief update on our 2024 budget. Our Board of Trustees approved that budget in October of this year. And shortly thereafter, we submitted it to the SEC for its review that the FASB accounting support fees are consistent with the requirements of Section 109 of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act. We continue to stay in touch with the SEC staff to facilitate this process and answer any questions as we wait for the Commission to deliberate on an order relating to the FASB's accounting support fees. We hope that an order can be issued no later than the early part of next year. In line with our usual process, management will then start look, working with both the PCAOB and FINRA to begin the assessment and billings for 2024 FASB and GAZBIE accounting support fees respectively. We will be sure to update you on this matter at the trustees' next meeting in February. As Ed mentioned earlier, we have just announced a number of very important appointments and reappointments. And I'd like to add my congratulations and welcome to all those that have been appointed and reappointed. And also to say on behalf of myself and the FAF staff, we are especially thankful to our departing trustees, David Lillard and, and Mary Barth. But I'd also like to just thank everyone who was involved in this year's appointments process, namely the Appointments Committee of the Board of Trustees under the leadership of Lynette Kelly, which is an extremely hardworking and dedicated committee. And Betsy Guardi, the FASB Vice President of Human Resources and her team for the considerable amount of time and effort they committed to completing this year's scope of work. And I also like to recognize that they have already started to look ahead to the 2024 search plans for 2025 appointments. Finally, I want to mention that the FAF Communications and Technologies Teams have been working closely with FASB and GAZBIE on a project to redesign our websites. This is a critical component of how we engage with our stakeholders and provide transparency to the standard setting process. We are tracking to go live with the new FASB, GAZBIE and FAF websites during the first quarter of 2024. I'm hopeful that we will be able to provide a positive update on this project during the trustees' meeting in February. And Ed, unless there are any questions, that's my report.
Thanks, John. Any questions for John? And if not, with a very quiet drum roll, we'll go to a final report from our Treasurer, David Lillard, on financials. David?
Very good. The FAF's financial results for the nine months ending September 30, 2023 are located on Master Page 128 in your materials. Overall, the financial condition of the FAF remains strong. Net assets increased 23.5 million, primarily related to the recognition of the entire year of FASB and GAZBIE counting support fees in the first quarter. Overall, this amounted to a $4.9 million favorable variance against budget and includes operating expenses $3.5 million favorable against the budget, primarily due to salary and benefits for several vacant positions across FASB, GAZBIE and FAF and lower travel and meeting costs and placement relocation costs due to timing. Reserve fund investment income was $1.3 million favorable against budget due to favorable market conditions. Publishing revenues were $300,000 favorable against budget, primarily due to increase in license fees and two months of unbudgeted FASB codification and GARS online subscription revenue with the rollout of the enhanced preview at the end of February. Overall, headcount was one below budget related to an open GAZBIE position. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, David. Any questions for David? And if not, before we close, you've already heard mention of this appropriately from, from several speakers. But I'd like us to formally recognize departing trustees, David Lillard and Mary Barth. We'll take a few moments to present each with a proclamation of appreciation. Both David and Mary joined the Board of Trustees in 2019 and have served as officers. Mary is Vice Chair and David is Secretary and Treasurer. And David also is co-chair of the Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. On behalf of the board, I'd first like to take a moment to say thank you to both Mary and David for their extraordinary achievement, commitment to the work of the trustees and for the experience, expertise and insight they've so generously shared during their tenure. Their terms will conclude on December 31st of this year. And to show our appreciation for the important roles they've played, I have the pleasure of presenting them with these proclamations. David, can I ask you to come around the corner here? Maybe I'll present yours and then I'll read the proclamation.
Thank you.
And Mary, you're sitting right next to me. So you don't have to get up, but why don't I, on behalf of, for both of you, just read the proclamation for your service as a trustee and Vice Chair of the Financial Accounting Foundation, thank you for your steadfast leadership, passion for the mission, work to champion the independent standard setting process and diligent oversight and stewardship of the FASB, the GAZBIE and the foundation. And as the incoming newbie chair, let me just add my personal thanks for you've been nothing but supportive this entire year and I'm deeply grateful.
Thank you so much.
It has been a genuine pleasure for all of us to serve with you. So with that, this is the end of the public session of today's FAF Board of Trustees meeting. Thank you again to those who, of you who tuned in to the webcast for this meeting. And let me remind everyone that the next FAF Board of Trustees meeting will be held here in Norwalk on Tuesday, February 27th, 2024. Thank you and have a great day.